... The organization meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Exeter Township School District will come to order. Would everyone please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I am the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to announce that we have Hunter Aaron on the phone speaking with us. The Secretary will please call.
Hunter Aaron, Sharon McClelland, Michelle Stratten, Michael Chapina, Anne Herring, David Hemberger, Allison Wilson, John Fidler.
Welcome to the members of the public and to our special guests. The purpose of this annual organization meeting is to officially announce the election of newly elected and re-elected members of the Board, to swear in those members who have not already been sworn, and to organize the Board for the coming year by electing a permanent President and Vice President. As you can see from the agenda for the organization portion of the meeting, we will not take up the regular legislative business of the Board at this time. Immediately following the organization meeting this evening, we will repeat convening a regular workshop meeting for that purpose. The first order of business is to elect temporary President to chair the organization meeting. I would like to nominate Dr. Sharon McClelland for temporary President.
Second name, Hunter.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, I will declare the nomination as closed. The vote is, oh, I'm sorry, so, are there any further nominations? Sorry. Seeing as there are none and there are no objections, I will declare the nomination as closed. All in favor of Dr. McClelland for temporary President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no votes since there's three of us, so the vote is unanimous, three to three, in favor of Dr. McClelland, who is now the temporary President. I now turn the chair over to Dr. McClelland.
Thank you. So, our incoming members this evening, those who are newly elected or re-elected to seats on the Board last month are John Fidler, Anne Herring, David Hemberger, Mike Chapina, and Allison Wilson. And the Secretary will now please read their certificates of election.
We've received from the County Board of Elections, Berks County, a certificate of election for Allison A. Wilson, eighty-nine Glen Hill Drive, Redding, Pennsylvania, who was duly elected to the office of Exeter Township School District School Director for a term of four years. We've received from the County Board of Elections of Berks County, a certificate of election for Anne Herring, ten-ten Glen Hill Drive, PA, who was duly elected to the office of Exeter Township School District School Director for a term of four years. We've received from the County Board of Elections of Berks County, a certificate of election for Michael Chapina, one hundred and eighty-sixth Street, Redding, PA, who was duly elected to the office of Exeter Township School District for School Director for a term of four years. We've received from the County Board of Elections, a certificate of election for John T. Fidler, thirty-four Gordon Court, Redding, Pennsylvania, who was duly elected to the office of Exeter Township School District School Director for a term of four years. We've received from the County Board of Elections of Berks County, a certificate of election for David Hemberger, forty-seventh Sycamore Drive, Redding, PA, who was duly elected to the office of Exeter Township School District School Director for a term of four years. Congratulations to all of you.
Okay, so our guest of honor is Magisterial District Judge Sandra L. Fayley, who will now administer the oath of office to newly elected or re-elected members. Everybody get sworn in if you want to do twice. Raise your hand and be ready. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge these duties.
And that I will discharge these duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
Congratulations. The Secretary has made a duty as, the Secretary is saying that he should feel copy when required, but it actually needs to be completed by the person being sworn in, District Judge Sandra L. Fayley, and we turn to the Board Secretary and fulfill the adjournment. So you all have attached to the agenda a list of all the qualified legally elected or appointed members of the Board of School Directors through the year now beginning. Does anyone see any errors or anapercy from the list? Does anyone desire that that list be read aloud? Alright, so I will now open up the floor to nominations for the Office of President.
I'd like to nominate Dr. David Hemberger as President of the Exeter School Board.
Are there any other nominations for President? Seeing none, and if there is no objection, I declare the nomination as closed. Our Board policy number zero five states that the election of an officer requires the winning candidate to receive the majority of all the votes cast by those present and voting. Since there are eight members present, five votes are necessary to win. If everyone present casts a vote. Our policy also states that if no one receives sufficient votes on the first ballot, a runoff vote will be held between the two candidates to receive the most votes in the first ballot. Are there any questions on this procedure? Okay, unless there's motion to proceed differently, we will now vote for the candidates by a show of hands. As I call the names of the candidates, we'll turn in order, oh, no, that's never mind. As if there's more than one. Yeah, okay. So as to David Hemberger for the Office of President, please indicate your vote by raising your hand.
Hunter, do you have your hand in the air?
Oh. Hunter?
I may have lost it.
Hunter?
So we have seven, that's still more than the five.
Okay.
There we go, so we have seven, too.
Alright, so, alright, so the vote is seven, unanimous, seven to zero in favor of David Hemberger, and he has been elected President, congratulations. Now, I will now open the floor to nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Allison Wilson for Vice President. Second?
Allison Wilson has been nominated for Vice President. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice President? Seeing none, and if there is no objection, I declare the nomination as closed. As we did before, we will vote on the candidates for Vice President by a show of hands. As to Allison Wilson for the Office of Vice President, please indicate your vote by raising your hand. So we have, the vote is unanimous in favor of Allison Wilson, and she has been elected Vice President, congratulations. Yeah, so, that's what I said, I'll now turn the meeting over to our new board President, David Hemberger.
Well, thank the Board for their support, and I know we have really a lot to accomplish this year with the Board and with the district, and I'm really excited to work with the folks, the new folks that we have, and it's great to see our returning board members as well as well for another year, some of us for four years.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to say a special thank you because we all work hard, all Board members, and we give a lot of our own time, and you know, spend a lot of time in meetings and all kinds of other things, and I know that as Board President, you have a much larger responsibility and have to attend a lot of meetings and do a lot of, you know, behind the same fork, and so I'm so glad and much appreciate that and your service.
Thank you, thanks very much. Sharon, I'd like to second that as well, I know in my conversations with David, he does an excellent job as the Board President, reluctantly, he does believe that it should be shared amongst Board members, but we're going into a very critical year in the school district, and I think that the Board sees value in the continuity of his leadership because to your point, he has done an outstanding job, and I realize the time commitment of all the things he has to do as the Board Presidents, and I certainly agree with what Dr. McClelland is saying. So I really, I really am humbled by the work that I work with here, and we have excellent folks on the Board, and I'm just very appreciative of your support, and I'll do what I can to earn it for the remainder of the year. So, we have a few more things. We have a few more things that we want to try to accomplish in this meeting before we move on to our regularly scheduled workshop meeting, neutral pollings meeting. Every member before them has a schedule of regular Board meetings for the next year. If a member of the Board, if members of the Board see a need to make any changes to the schedule at this point, I'll open the floor up, attend any discussion. If there are discussions, there's a need to, for some immediate action, I'll entertain a motion, an appropriate motion, but if no one wishes to consider making any change to the schedule, the Board should correct Mrs. Guydish to advertise our meeting, again, for the current year, so the policy, zero two six. Anyone see a, have any thoughts about the schedule? Should be.
Should be your mind, just refer your, your pack.
Should be the pack. Even if we, if we are considering changes to our schedule, Sunshine Act requires us to do three days' public notice for our first regular reading of the calendar of fiscal year, and the Board should direct the Secretary to do so for at least our January meeting. Since it appears that no one is inclined to suggest any changes, may I have a motion? Let the Secretary publicize our meeting schedule, set for the policy.
So moved.
Have a second.
Thanks.
Good motion and a second, any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We also need a motion, in a motion to authorize signatures with PNC Bank for the general fund accounts, the payroll account, the Capital Project Fund, two thousand fourteen Capital Project Fund, two thousand nineteen Capital Project Fund, and the Food Services Fund, and needing authorization for the following signatures, for Board President, Vice President, or Secretary, Mrs. Guydish, and Treasurer, Elena, Elena Panzer.
So moved.
Second? Good motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We also need a motion to authorize current signatures to be official until electronic. Signatures can be obtained for the two thousand nineteen School Board officials.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So we've completed our agenda for the organization meeting, I think we've all completed our oaths of office and certificates, and provide those to Mrs. Guydish and to the public revised that we are going to adjourn, but we'll take a five-minute break, so we'll reconvene after that with our regular December workshop meeting, which is also scheduled for this evening. May I have a motion included?
So moved.
Second? A motion to adjourn, it's a move and second, and all in favor, say aye. As far as matters, we've adjourned, we will convene in five minutes.
It doesn't take long pictures.
These meetings are designed to be more open and communicative and interactive than our regular meetings because the lighters on the agenda would be, I'm considering for voting on these activities, and if there are questions, concerns, comments, analysis, and other things, we'll have discussions on these meetings. I first want to say that we, after now we've completed our organization process, we do have a vacancy, my understanding is that that vacancy has been posted, and we've already started to receive applicants for that two-year position that's now available on the Board. I believe, Mrs. Guydish, as it described, that the, because the close of, noon on Friday is the last day to many applicants, so letters of interest should be directed to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Guydish, and our plan is to have interviews next Tuesday, so the following Tuesday, that ward, the seventeenth, you'll be able to vote on that, on the candidates sitting in the House. So that's, so please plan on that, I'm not sure whether that meeting starts at six o'clock, but earlier, depends on how many candidates we get, I'm trying to remember, I think probably about half hour, but something.
So, Dr. Hemberger, just to note, the candidates are interviewed in a public setting.
So they'll be here in a public setting. Okay, we're going to start off this evening with a building program report, and this is from Dr. Percy Howard, and you want to be dealt with this one?
Welcome, Dr. Howard.
Good evening, this is my first board report via Watton Creek Principal, so I'm excited to deliver that, I've had a very warm welcome from the Watton staff, the parents, I did share with you a couple months ago that when I was meeting some of the students in the cafeteria, the little boy said, "I really didn't want, I didn't really want you to be the principal," and I said, "Oh, really, why?" And he said, "Because I really, I really would like a boy principal, I think they do a better job." I hope that I'm meeting his expectations, he really was not sure about me. So, I'm going to start by going over some of the data that was, came from last year, it came from the future ready index, the future ready index, that this seat on the out last year, the first piece is our attendance, and you can see that we are, we are clear above in the attendance area, so ninety-five percent of our students, I shouldn't have broken my glasses, so let me use this report instead, ninety-five percent of our students are coming to school regularly, and that is above the statewide average. Drawing your attention down to the three charts, you'll see that I have a three-year average of what our PSAs scores look like in ELA, math, and science, science is only tested in grade four, and the ELA and the math is actually a combination of both in third and fourth graders. As our district data has been presented by Dr. Watters, I guess that was last month, you can see that Watton's is very similar, mirrors it, the Chinese in ELA in that we continue to make incremental growth. I looked at that a little bit before the presentation tonight, and what I'm noticing is that in the anchors that our students have tested in in both third and fourth grade, over the last several years, we continue to see an increase in those anchors. Areas that we still need to work on in our Watton Creek is the area of language acquisition, more that ground, that's something that we had identified last year with Julie Klein, is something that we're going to continue to be working on. An area of focus in fourth grade has been continuing to work on those TDAs, the text-dependent analysis, that plays a significant part in the students gaining proficiency, we have to see growth in that area, but that's been a very strong focus for us over the last three years, previously when I was at Lorraine, bringing Karen and Mencio, and last year, both myself and Jeff worked together with the Watton Creek teachers and the Lorraine teachers, we had them working together with Karen and Marjorie, looking at TDAs, putting in strategies, talking about how we can break that down, it's very formalized grading, there is no creativity, it's a rubric, they want students to be able to cite evidence, and it's really teaching the students that, that process, to be able to do that, to read that test, and be able to answer those prompts, and it's a lot, the prompts are sometimes difficult to understand, so it's really working immediately with the students, starting in third and second grade, to be able to have the skills to summarize, and then in third grade, the text-dependent questions, and then building up to the text-dependent analysis, which is a more sophisticated type of rating. In the math area, you can see that the scores have started, are trending downward. Again, looking at the anchors in both third and fourth grade, what I noticed looking at the Watton Creek data is that we tend to be a little all over the place, but more interestingly, what I started to notice is when I was looking at the on-hand report this evening, that's our new data platform, I noticed that in certain anchors, we had sort it out, where students were attaining eighty percent proficiency, seventy percent proficiency, and over the last number of years, for whatever reason, we started to have a dip in those seen anchors. I'm not sure why exactly that, if that's happening, other than to think that that cohort of students from that time have now moved on, and the students that we're apparently testing have only ever been exposed to this particular program, which is something that has been discussed again, you know, previously, so I'm anxious to start working with our new math supervisor, to kind of dig into what we're seeing as far as our math trends, talking to the teachers, and making changes that make sense, so that way we can see our math scores decreasing that we have seen our ELA scores. And then in science, you'll see that our scores are going the same, we are typically around eighty percent final for our current scores. Looking at the next slide, you'll see that this is where our students, we can see the students who are proficient or advanced in the PSAs, and again, we just are working down, in the top score is where our students on, the number of proficient and advanced students we had, the second line is the students on top of the scale, is the scale average, and then the scale has set a goal for us, that by twenty thirty, this is what their expectation is. So you can see that in all three areas, we are above the scale average, which is obviously good news. In science, we're significantly above the scale average, in ELA, we're again above the scale average, and in math, we're, we are, we are above the scale average. I was actually sharing with Joey tonight that because I'm a button for punishment, I decided to take a course on data, and, I thought that was a good idea at the time, not, not going to go see Thanksgiving, and there was people from all over, New York, North Carolina, South Carolina, Vermont, in this, in the cohort that I was in, and one of the topics that we had talked about was programs, looking at programs and identifying what, their value, and a couple people chose to talk about math, and these department responded, it sounds like, not just in Pennsylvania, but in New York, and in South Carolina, and North Carolina, this is the same issues that they're seeing, and one of the people actually wrote that they had envisioned, they just adopted it a number of years ago, and now they're looking to look at, update that. So this is something that is not just an issue that we're seeing here in our school, but we're seeing, from what I can gather, other, other states, other school districts are seeing as well.
Can I just ask a question while we're on this call directly with Dr. Wilson, you can throw it after wherever you want, but when a state sets a goal for twenty thirty, what exactly are they basing that on? What metrics are they using, what, what, what support are they giving to try to achieve that goal?
As far as what supports they're giving, that's, that's an expectation that they're giving us, they have not given us any reasons as to why they set that number, it's similar to what the No Child Left Behind numbers were set at, hundred percent, I, I think it was the next year, it was arbitrary numbers, I don't know if you've seen any.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, I think they, they probably, at least based on what I have read in some of the documents that have come out from PDE, they look at kind of across the state where the average is, and try to set a high bar, you know, to get there, you know, like, given that math averages are in the forty-five percent range, you know, I think, looking at numbers that are close to eighty percent, eighty percent is generally considered mastery within a multi-tiered system of support, and so they, they try to get those numbers as close to eighty percent as possible, as goals, because you have eighty percent of your kids in the building or the district that are proficient in those areas, then that generally indicates that your core instruction in those areas is strong.
But to answer your point, they've given us no justification.
But no, no specific reason.
Dr. Howard, in the class, did you run with other people from across states, did they have expressed similar things about that math, concerning math scores?
Yeah, it just seems that everybody, and, and some people chose to look at math, some people chose to look at ELA, and some of the concerns that they were bringing up about ELA are against, same concern that we had, but shifting from, you know, previously what the standards look like to common core, you know, what we're instructing our students on is in kindergarten, looks like what kids learn, you know, in the first grade, or in the second grade, and now everything is reduced down, and so people are struggling to identify what are the correct programs to put in place to help students, average is not average anymore, the average student is, is a time starting to struggle with what we're attempting. So it's trying to figure out how we can meet the standard on, based on what that particular student also needs, so it's really, we're, we're looking at really individualizing instruction for all of our students to make sure that we're getting to what they need as students to be successful, and everybody's struggling with it, we're all struggling with it. Some people are doing better, and, you know, I can't say that it's a program per se, so, but it was interesting, it was interesting hearing different perspectives, I appreciate your that. So the next slide is the breakdown of our, our students at Watton Creek, and again, you'll notice that we are above the statewide average, more so in science, a little bit above in ELA, and just again, a fringe above in, in math. This is our key boss data, and we are blue, so we show, we had high growth in ELA, and we had a high growth in science, and math were at green, and that was, we did go down, last year we were in blue for math, but we were in green for science, so we did have a little bit of a shift there, but then again, that does correlate with the math because the score did, the score did go down. To just share with you a little bit about what we're doing in K one and two, I didn't clear DIBLs information, DIBLs is a little bit more difficult because we give, it's not, it's not a standard test in that you give the same task to each group, so the only task that you give the same in kindergarten first and second is a test called nonsense words, and in kindergarten, you give that at the end of the year, in first grade, you also at the end of the year, in the second grade, you only give it in the beginning of the year, and the purpose of the nonsense words is to see how students are decoding, if they can, if they're shouting out the word, or they can just say it, and you'll notice that if you look at, if you follow the cohorts, that for the most part, our cohorts of students, they are increasing. One of the things that has really helped over the years is we had implemented a program called Fondations, which is a phonics-based program, it's not something that we had had previously, but we still had that group of students that were struggling with that phonics awareness, that phonics piece, so last year, we implemented a program called Heavens. So last year, we implemented a program called Headroom, which is another just ten-minute dip every day in the classroom, and the teachers do, they can do it for the whole class, they can do it in a small group. And it's just another way for us to continue to work on that, that phonics piece, because that will help as a foundation from the coming year. So we're anxious to see how that impacts our DIBLs scores, because that's something that we do, that we do try. And the most exciting part of my presentation, I feel, is that we did a turkey trot this year. I know the girl, our PDE teacher, she had always signed a law for diabetes. And this year, she decided to raise the bar and do a turkey trot. And so I reached out to Dr. Phillips and Dr. Winters and said, so I would like to encourage all the teachers to dress up as turkeys. And, but we, you know, we have to have a cross. So, you know, for the leading team, can we, to have cover their recess for thirty minutes, give them thirty minutes extra recess, because teachers, you know, they always, they need time. So they breathe. And so the whole staff participated, and this is everybody together. And then these are the various teams. Some teams made costumes, some, some teams, they purchased them from Amazon, some teams disguised themselves because they felt protective of turkeys. The winners, the winners were before, was fourth grade. You'll notice that Mr. Hackley, who is here, is carrying that as a fake act. But there was, there was some hard feelings that wasn't communicated or recounted, because they felt that his costume depicted violence against turkeys. I assured everyone that because we used a Google form, there was no cheating, you were only allowed one vote. I had made sure the form was set out right. That's one of the big things I've learned how to do for my dissertation, collecting data. And so we decided the results, so fourth grade are officially winners, and so they won't be having the extra recess. And then the last thing that I want to close with is, and also did a collection of candy to donate to, opportunity has a couple other places, and they need cards to get along with it. And they did also make cards for the school board to talk about their projects. So there are cards here, just for everybody, so I'll leave that here for you. But there's a card for everybody, so maybe they've left over, I'm close to nine hundred pounds. That's my presentation, and I serve it.
Well, certainly. Any questions about that? Dr. Howard, what is, what are the most significant problems that you're facing at your school? Problems that wake you up at three o'clock in the morning that you wish would just go away?
Well, that's my kids. But honestly, when I think about the things that we're seeing in school, it's, it's really that mental health component, that I know that several other principals have also talked about, Sue Miller has been working on. We just have some students that are, are really, they're really struggling. And there's a lack of ability to cope. And we see it coming into the schools, and it creates, it creates issues in the classroom for the teachers, and it's trying to find resources to help the kids and help their families, because so many times, we have families that are reaching out to us, and they're looking for support. But the mental health system is very challenging to navigate. And it was a help that we were able to get Ashley in place, and Alicia has been wonderful, the staff coordinator for the high school. But there is just a lack of places that will even take different choices, where they won't see so many times, where the equipment is so far out. So really, the mental health piece is a huge.
Do you have any numbers or set with the kids?
No, I'm not on the topic we had. I, I, I don't. I would say that we have a handful of students in every class, or every grade level, and it's things from, you know, families dealing with opioid addiction, to a recent divorce. It's, it's any, any member of those things. And kids deal with it in different ways. We usually have one child who is going through a ton of things, but they have a strong support system with their family, and they're fine. And you have another child who has another issue, and it's, they can't, they can't cope with that.
How long does it take to help these students?
Well, we have progressions in schools right now, but you only can access progressions if you have medical assistance or surgery championship. That's a small population of students that can actually access that. So if we are going through other sources, where we're bringing in Alicia from the high school, Alicia Werner, it's been her working with that family to schedule. And sometimes it, it could take a month or two, depending on trying to navigate that insurance piece. And she's great at making sure that parents know where to go. But it could be a while before you get an appointment. And then students and then parents worry, because you can only get the appointments at certain times of the day. And so we have encouraged parents to take the appointment. We'll, we'll work around, but your needs are already answered, your child's in the office and is supported.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Okay, the next section of our agenda, place to public comments, is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board, whether it's item on the agenda, or any other subjects that might be, after what we've heard here at the chat. If you'd like to make an announcement, or if you'd like to comment, just leave a comment. Okay, saved up, we're going to move forward through this agenda again, these are the topics that we're going to be covering. Next, the next board meeting, we have minutes from the special board voting meetings of November twelfth. I'm sorry, December third, I did that wrong. I'm sorry. Yeah, November twelve. And then workshop minutes of November twelfth as well. And then board voting meetings will be nineteen. We're policies. We have several, most of these are all set for second reading for Thursday, and there are a couple that I'd like to use talk specifically about, starting with the eight, ten, point three, which is school vehicle drivers. The climate standing was, we received a communication from our community of health cats, who reviewed that particular policy and cautioned us against appropriate, felt it was unnecessary, and US said that there's, there's some contracts in the contract, contracts, and other language that is really problematic. So my recommendation is to pull that off of the agenda, the voting meeting, and if you are going to reconsider that, we need to have a conversation with us in Thanksgiving, to get a better sense of what this is. I know that a good bit of it had to do with, seemed to me, for a count, what's that, is that, is that a big part of it? And these are, these are school vehicle drivers that are not driving school buses. These are, school vehicles are considered to be forms of transportation for less, for ten or less students, if I'm not mistaken. So it could be vans, or other, other small vehicles, it could be sports related, it could be, it could be coaches that are driving, the other staff members other than our drivers. We do have a separate policy for our drivers. So that we would like to, to scratch on the agenda. Policy eight oh seven, which is I do on the agenda, open exercises and flag displays. We have some concerns about that. If you look at the language with that particular policy, it makes it mandatory, I'm just kind of working off recall here, makes it mandatory that the schools provide a moment of silence or a silent prayer every morning, as last year, as we had a class school. And the current policy that we have is, is not reflect a mandatory requirement for that. I believe it's written to be optional. So it's, it's May language versus shit, shell language. So we would like to kind of revert back to that. So we're going to modify that policy a little bit more to reflect some of the older language. A hyperlink to the state code is, you know, really kind of, I was a little surprised that the SBA put that language in the draft, as they did. Didn't seem to make any sense to me, as the administrators looked at it, as our policy committee looked at it, it really didn't seem to make any sense. So we're going to, we're going to shift gears for eight oh seven, and I think we're going to revert that back to a third reading. The other policy that I'd like to, and to gain some conversation on, is seven oh two point one, which is a policy that was, that came to us through the staffing administration related to memorials for students. And we already had a little bit of conversation about this, and, and this evening, workshop meeting is a good opportunity for us to discuss this a little bit more. The board has had a chance to kind of see maybe some of the professional literature that kind of relates to this in terms of memorials. As you read through the policy, and you can see that memorials reflect more than just tangible or physical manifestations of memorializing at a loss, a student who's lost. You know, it, it also has to do with activities as well as permanent memorials that might be more of a physical manifestation. So we had our high school administration and our high school staff that had proposed a policy, and there were different questions about the permanent memorials, and I wondered if there were any members of high school staff that wanted to speak to the rationale of the question. So we have, hi, are you welcome?
I apologize for my appearance and fatigue. I was away on vacation, but not a relaxing vacation. So it was a high school afternoon. Sure. But I'm, I've been hearing some different things from different sources about this policy, and I felt that despite the exhaustion, I should come and, you know, I really wanted to just have a couple of minutes to provide some background as to how this has come about, because I'm not sure that everyone fully understands maybe how this has come to fruition, that some people in the district have requested a memorial policy. But there is a flight team in Berks County, it's facilitated by the intermediate unit, and it's to provide support to schools that are in crisis. And Exeter has a number of staff members who are trained, and we are able to respond and support other schools likewise, they can support us. Many years ago, I was trained, and so were a number of other professionals, and that training was facilitated by someone who I would consider a guru in crisis response, crisis management, Sherry Lowery. And one of the things that we spent quite a bit of time talking about is the need for schools to have a memorial policy, so that schools can support students. It takes a lot of the guesswork out when you're responding to a crisis or a tragedy. Since that training, the IU has offered additional training, but it pales in comparison to the training that those of us who have Sherry's training experienced. Some of us went to fallow trees and refreshers, and I'll be honest with you, I've had conversations with others and said, if this is the person that's going to come and help us at Exeter in a crisis, and this is the training they've received, I don't feel confident. That's how much they, I think many of us have in the training that we receive. So as a result, our flight team, over the years, we would meet periodically, not so much recently, but every time we would have a meeting, we would bring up, the flight team would bring up the need for a policy. And this, so this is not something new. This is something that's been discussed for many years, probably as far back as I have the training, which was maybe thirteen years ago. So the whole notion of a policy is to make sure that a student is commemorated, they're commemorated equally, it avoids the possibility of disparity. And like I said, when emotions are high, we don't want to risk, you know, not handling things equitably. Our focus as a flight team and crisis team is really to focus on the activities that we will do as a school to help students through the process. That's really what, what it's about. How do we support the students, and how do we move them through the grieving process, provide closure, and move forward? So that's really been, you know, kind of the focus of having a, a policy, and so that we can do that consistently for all students. And I would say, in general, we're fairly consistent, but there have been some activities over the years that were different for different students. And not to say right or wrong, we didn't have a policy in place, but having a policy would hopefully ensure that, that things are consistent. I was really grateful, early this year, Dr. Miller reached out to a number of people and said, let's get a committee together, let, let's work on this policy. She knew that it was important to many of us, many of us that have gone through the flight team training, and knowing that this is, it's really necessary to do right by our students, to have something that we can follow. So Dr. Miller convened a, convened a team, and we met several times throughout the spring to develop a policy. The team consisted of administrators at varying levels, a couple counselors, school psychologists. In hindsight, you know, maybe it would have been nice to have some more people that had been part of that flight team, but nonetheless, we did try to work together to develop a policy. I'm concerned, because I can't speak for the others who were involved in developing the policy, I can only speak to my personal viewpoint. And my, my opinion is that the policy was really to help ensure consistency, to alleviate some of the stress of an administrator. You know, administrators change, not all of them have been through the training that, that we have as flight team at first. And that way, it gives them a guide to follow. So I think, I think it's, you know, doing right, doing right by everyone to have something in place. One of the things that I remember speaking about strongly was that we could direct families and those individuals who fundraised to organizations like the ECEF and the Alumni Association, direct them to those organizations to help them facilitate memorials. So quite frankly, I was a little surprised when I saw the most recent draft, because I think it looks a lot different than what we had been working on. Again, I can only speak from, you know, where I was in my thought process, but I think that it does look different from what we were working on last spring. And my hope would be that maybe some more consideration could be given to what is the purpose, what are we trying to accomplish? And, you know, the, the issue of contributions and memorials, really, does that have to be attached to this policy, or could that be separate? You know, let us plan for how we are going to handle things as a school, and direct families to those other organizations who can help facilitate memorials, because resources vary, the contributions vary from student to student, you know, depending on how much money is raised, and resources of the families and friends. So if we can separate that, I, I think that would be great. I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if it all has to be all in, in one policy.
I mean, you know, you don't, I don't think we necessarily want to have several policies. I think we do have a policy of KIPS that might, you know, reflect some of the, you know, some of the guidance that might involve monetary contributions of schools, or how they go through the ECEF, how they would process. What is there specifically, industries about this policy that kind of you got concerns about? You've read through it, and you've read through the new draft, and we had to make some changes to it to allow it to conform to a policy format. So mainly, the whole idea was, you know, that the work that we did on it as a committee was to really try to, to kind of put it in, in a, in a format that, that is... that is more consistent with the kind of policy language that we typically consider. I thought the language was already in that draft policy though about memorials, permanent memorials, you know, markers and statuary and those sorts of things. What's, what's your flight team's sense of things like permanent memorials that would be included in the school, in the high school?
Again, I can't, I can't speak for everyone, so you know, I think that's unfair. But I do think that what is meaningful for one may be different for someone else. And so by not having that process facilitated through the school, it enables family and friends to work through those other organizations to designate a memorial that is fitting for that individual. And we have that happening already. We have the benches in front of the high school. We have the bricks that are not just memorial bricks, they're, you have, so I guess, and.
Yeah, my, my sense is that you, your team in developing this policy rely on some of the recommendations that came from the Crisis Management Institute. And we received a copy of that, that research paper that was done by Sherry.
Yeah.
Or whatever. And so we've had a chance to kind of read through that and you could see in that that she was, you know, I think the purpose of that paper was to really kind of broaden the view of what a memorial is. It's not necessarily a physical manifestation of anything. It might be more of an activity that is designed to commemorate the life of a student, I guess. And so, you know, as I described, some people's more, think of a memorial as more of a verb than a noun and in that respect. But I guess the biggest question that we have, you know, things like how disruptive are permanent markers and memorials in a school setting? And is that problematic for, for the staff at the high school or anywhere buildings? Should those, and I think that's probably one of the biggest theories that we have questions about. Because that specifically is, you know, a lot of these folks are looking for some physical manifestation of a, of a memory of an individual versus what you're describing, a school gathered around in the aftermath of a death to try to help kids work through the process and understand grieving, understand death. Give them the skills to kind of work, understand this is a life lesson or an opportunity to learn about death and, and then move on perfectly.
Absolutely. We do have permanent memorials. What I'm saying, again, I don't want to speak for others, nor would I want others to speak for, for me. I think that those more permanent memorials or those opportunities should be facilitated not through the school. So that we say every student that passes is going to have their name on a plaque. I mean, there are how many different buildings, which do you have, do you have a plaque in every building? So it becomes very complicated. So firstly, I think encouraging families to work through the organizations that can facilitate a memorial that's meaningful for them, that, that's.
Well, I think your goals, I think, I think some of the share of this goal too, equity, you mentioned equity and consistency. You know, whatever we do, we don't want to necessarily save one life for another. So that it would be appropriate that if there are memorials, we pay that there is some degree of predictability and consistency, both in policy and what we do as a school, as a, as a, as a school body to kind of respond to. And that's what, that's what I'm hearing as I'm reading through the documents, I'm trying to understand the intent of the policy. That's, that's, that's what I'm coming up with. Then I recognize on the flip side of that, you could be have compelling memorials that have been, I think made. When we do have situations where, let's say there's a gift in the school district, how would we consider a place for a permanent marker memorial sometimes? So we're, as a board, I think we're trying to sit through this a little bit and try to get the best, come up with the best solution. And right now, I think the policy that we have kind of lists memorials that are more tangible as unacceptable and not allowed. And I think the question that we're going to have in your support is how strict can we, you know, feel that maybe they're maybe discouraged, but are there times when it might be helpful for us to consider? And so should we have some guidelines, some draft in terms of, of this? Again, trying to maintain consistency, effectively and recognition of change, you know. You understand our dilemma and we're, I think we're working together on this, but I think we're still, we're trying to move the right line. Any board, uh, John, Mr.?
I've got a couple of questions. So I can't completely remember looking on a solution for which problem doesn't exist. I'm trying to understand and what these answers to these questions will have. How many other schools, and this is not just for you, for others, how many other school districts in Berks County have a policy like this?
The only thing I know is we can recontact the SBA, BSNF samples. And so they provide us some more samples for each school that's typical. You know, so I, I don't have, I don't have a sense of how many in Berks County, I just know there are policies.
Are there, were there any boards on Berks?
I don't believe, I think there are districts in Berks that have policies, but they didn't send, they sent us a range of policies that kind of reflect, you know, a more of a variety. So we have options to choose from and we start, you know, developing our own. This is not a PSBA, this is not an area where PSBA has a sample policy per se. So they give us policies in market districts and they're not a state policy. They're not going to give us every city. So I can't speak for that area, so.
My, my understanding is that there are a number. So my second question is.
Did you say no?
No.
God.
I started, I'm not sure if it's a memorial policy or it's needs numbers or something else.
It's another type of.
Yeah, but I've looked and I under, you know, seven oh two point one under other board policies and I have not been able to find any memorial policies in Berks County.
Right, and so that leads me to my second question, what's special about Exar? Right where you want to hear it.
Now, I'm just reacting to what Mrs. Chris said was the flight team went through the training. And it was strongly recommended that boards, that boards develop policies to address matters. And so what does it provide you with a sort of a pathway or guideline in terms of responding and responding consistently? So you can do things predictably and in an organized format without necessarily reinventing the wheel every time you have a traffic situation.
Well, my, I think for my own fact, yeah, really, but this is, could I get a copy of those four?
Yeah, I, I, I read them out of the app, or maybe you have them received as well. Yeah, because we sent, I sent those around to you sort of before you came on.
Because I'm not convinced that we need, so I'm hoping to leave you with this.
I just think at this point we should deal with this issue. I don't think we're ready to, I don't think maybe that the flight team, I think they should have more input. I just don't think it's ready to come to us yet.
What sort of steps we need to take in order to kind of keep this moving forward? We need to have a few more, some more input from the flight team?
I think those that, that went through the training and not that everyone that contributed to this, I mean, it's a great team. But I think that we may be missing some pieces and there may be some others that, that have some things to offer. Maybe we're, maybe we're covering more than what we have to. Maybe it doesn't have to be so complex, but to ensure consistency in our response and supporting students.
One of the things was, I mean, keep in mind, this is board policy. And board policy is really supposed to be a little bit more general, broader and doesn't necessarily involve details. You might have guidelines that you follow and I would suggest that, you know, if we don't have detail in our policy, we should have these guidelines to, you know, as a flight team to kind of help you, you know, be consistent and be able to make a decision in a, in a situation, which you always want, you know, all of the situations. But I mean, I, I have no problem taking them off the agenda for next board meeting. We have more discussion, more review and more input. And we have Mr. Miller and Dr. Herring, an opportunity to see the policies that you see from the SBA. And you can take it from our side as well.
I think, I think that would be great. I mean, I think we have a great start and I think the idea of discussing, but I'm just not sure we're there yet. But I, I do still think we need something, but maybe it's not there yet.
I, I agree. I mean, as I read through the research, it was pretty clear to me that all the authorities are saying boards should have policies. Well, we did, I did, we're coming, but, you know, it, it, it does make sense to me, you know, and as the policy chair, I, you know, I would promote that. Because I think policies are better for sure and helpful, particularly in times when we're a C, you know, we're lost. You know, somebody have it and we don't know how we should proceed. And policies help provide us with a, a path of how we should, how we should work. Thanks, thanks for coming back from your vacation.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion, anyone else have any questions or any different, different points of view? If not, we're going to move, we're going to move on. Thank you.
Dr. Amber, I just have a question around policy, if it's able to follow, which is school security personnel. And I just want to be clear in that as far as I know, I know that Dr. Miller's. But as far as I know, we have one employee in the district who's basically a security person. And that's a guy with a senior high.
Hot, flick out.
Yeah, and so we have, we have just technically one person, right? And we have, we have teams of people that come together and act as, as necessary. But we have one full-time designated person for security, just in high school. I just want to understand that. And I won't be at all, the training is going to show what these capabilities are. But when we look at addressing security matters, having a person who's properly trained and acknowledged as such, you know, can be a deterrent. But sometimes one person is enough. I know we're not in that path right now, but I just want to make sure that you have more, that I wasn't saying. Any other, any other comments on policies? Okay. Let's move into the next section of our agenda, which has business functions and, which is all of the time. So we will be addressing a couple of different areas, assessment appeal, assessment appeal on the agenda. And there are also budget transfers. Are there questions about either of those factors? We're going to move to your personnel committee and interview committee.
Thank you, Dr. Amber. We will be reviewing under personnel committee appointments and of several different roles. I see Kristy Powell here today as becoming the assistant principal at Reiften. So I don't know about you, would you want to jump in and say anything about that or?
Well, she's on the, the agenda to be approved. She went through a process. I, I would say the interview committee was very impressed. I was impressed as well. We had a discussion and she accepted. So we're waiting for her to be approved on the sixteenth and then we will get her on board as quickly as possible.
Then we have support staff, the teams of absence, course requests and. Any questions on any of those items for our board meeting? Okay, we're going to move into two functions, Mrs. Schrader.
I'm going to, to be voting on, first we'll be recording on the trip that I proposed in sixty hours. And then we'll be voting on the trip to be on this six hours. And also AMC that I contact with the executive services and just a correction to what everyone has. The hourly rate is actually fifty-six dollars and seventy cents and it would be correct.
Mrs. Gaidish, can you open the door for Hunter?
Hi, Chris Russell.
What is that, eight hours?
Open the back door. Sorry, I didn't get my text until.
Ever eight hours, which is like eight hours a week.
It would be a week.
Oh, eight hours.
So we'll have that corrected.
It's a day, per day, per day, per day.
Oh, per day. Eight hours per day.
Any other questions or comments about?
I have a question. What, what kinds of problems is this there?
This is, so speaking of autism, an RBT is a new category of technician to support some, a child with autism to represent behavior protection. And our behavior specialist create plans, they evaluate students and then RBT, which are, they, they come in and implement the plan and they're connected with their behavior specialists. So it's in a response to our increasing need for students with autism.
I have a question, any impressions from my member? So is this addendum something we're adding or are we increasing the hours or what exactly is the change?
Again, RBTs are somewhat new to supplement students with autism. And so PTS has been a company we've worked with for many years for speech therapy, school psychologists. They've never provided this service for us and they just started providing services in school districts for RBTs over the last three years. And so this is the first time they're providing for us. So this is what the addendum is for.
And it would be with one student or?
It would be for one student. An RBT would be with one, one student, yes, a new student that's just moved in.
Every day, eight hours a day?
Okay, I was, I'm sorry. I guess the other question I have is, did we look at, did we look at competitors?
Yes. Yeah. We've.
For getting the best roles and the best service.
We've worked with four different companies trying to find people and at the best rate. And unfortunately, there just aren't a lot of them out there. But this is within the range of what we've been paying other companies as well for the same service.
Can I just say that if it has the, they really do.
Why would you say that?
Just saying.
Any other comments? Okay, well, before we adjourn, I do want to announce that the board will be moving to executive session for legal and personal matters after this meeting. And at this moment, at this time, we are adjourned.